Okay. I, Jenna Savage Martin, President of the Duncanville ISD Board of Trustees, call this meeting of the Duncanville Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of Board of Trustees is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Good evening. Our mission at Duncanville ISD is to engage, equip, and empower all scholars to achieve their unique potential. We will now go into closed session. Okay, obviously, we are back from closed session. We will continue with our agenda items. We will now move to take action on items from closed session. Do I have a mo- uh, motion to approve the discussions that we had regarding contracts? Carlos, I'm sorry, I thought she was there. So sorry. Time out. Go ahead, just talk amongst yourself. I thought Carla was back. Sorry, thank you. No, no, Carly, you're fine. The motion number one.
Madam President, I would like to move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented to offer the one-year-term Certified Administrator Contract to the listed executive district administrators.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven oh. Motion number two.
Madam President, I move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented to offer the one-year-term Certified Professional Contract to the listed executive district administrator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Carla Fahy and seconded by Dr. Ivory. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven oh. Motion number three.
Madam President, I move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented to offer the one-year non-certified professional contract to the listed executive district administrators.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion was made by Janet Vera Cruz and seconded by Phil McNeely. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven oh. Thank you very much. We will now move into our opening ceremonies. The invocation will be given by Janet Vera Cruz, and Jackie Colton will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. If you'll please bow your heads for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet together. We come united to be a reflection of your kingdom. Breathe life into our discussions and decisions. Help us to be a team of leaders, educators, and trustees that have love and respect at its heart. We give you thanks for the rest that was given during the break. We pray for wisdom and understanding as knowledge is presented to our students. We pray that the return of our educators, students, staff, and leadership are robust, vibrant, and full of strength. Lord, I speak a blessing for those attending tonight and involved in the presentations and those behind the scenes. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please stand.
Please draw me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. It starts out weird. Okay, we will move on to the superintendent's report. I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, again, Board members and those that are in attendance. Board, I have the following items that I want to report on to, for you this evening. The first item is just to share that I had an opportunity just before spring break to read to the students at the Charles Acton Leadership Academy. And so, when I arrived, I was so graciously met by two student ambassadors that you see there, Navia Williams and Chloe Coleman. They greeted me, and they were my escorts for the day. And we selected, they selected a book for me, and the title of the book was called "I Am Enough" by Grace Byers. This book is about empowerment and believing in yourself, and an impactful story for our students. As you know, Charles Acton Leadership Academy is focused on the seven habits of an effective leader. And this book selection was in line with habit number seven, which they are focusing on. Habit number seven is sharpening the saw. And that's focused on enhancing the greatest asset that any of us have, and that's ourselves, building ourselves up, maintaining a positive outlook on life, continuing to grow. And so, these students are immersed in what it means to sharpen the saw. Had an awesome opportunity and awesome time there, reading to them, and especially the intentionality behind the book selection that they chose. So, we had, we had a good time there. The second item that I want to report on you, for you this evening, is on our My Future, My Choice Showcase. We had, of course, several board members to attend, and so, you had a chance to eyewitness firsthand the great event that we took place, that took place on March 5th. The whole purpose of the My Future, My Choice Showcase is for our high school, that was held at Duncanville High School, is for our families and our students to learn about the wide range of programs and learning opportunities that are available in Duncanville ISD. And so, many of the sections there that you saw were led by our students. They got a chance to showcase their talents and their work, things that they're working on within the programs that they are involved in. It's just a great opportunity to showcase all that's available in Duncanville ISD. Just to give you an example, a group of our esteemed academy students, they demonstrated how they apply the teachings that they're looking, that they're working on through the robotics program. And so, in between the demonstrations, there were people that were there shooting the 360-degree cameras. And I even saw a couple of our board members participating in that as well. And so, that's just one of many opportunities that were available for our students. And again, the whole purpose was just to showcase the awesome programs that are available here in Duncanville ISD. It was very well attended, very well put together, and we're thankful for all of those that were behind the scenes that made that event such a success. The next item that I have for you is just to share some great news about our soccer program. Our girls' soccer team, they closed out the regular season with a record of 20 wins, one losses, and one tie. And they are the district co-champions. And also, it is so important for you to know that all of the seniors received academic all honors on the girls' soccer team. So, not only are they producing on the field of competition, but they're also producing in the classroom, and we're really proud of that. The boys' soccer team repeated as district champions and won their 26th district championship. On Thursday, the 24th, the boys' and girls' soccer teams will play the first round of playoffs. Those, those games will be played in Waco, at Waco ISD Stadium, with the girls playing against Corpus Cove at 5:30, and the boys playing against Colleen. And we know that they're going to represent, represent us well. And the next item I have is our boys' basketball team. I guess I should appropriately say the 2022 UIL 6A State Championships Boys Basketball Team. Well, as you know, Coach McNeely set the standard here in Duncanville ISD for boys' basketball. It's made it really hard for anyone to come after him, to do what, what he has laid the foundation for others to accomplish here. And so, all the good work that we've been able to see, you know, you can look back and trace back to the foundation and the tradition and history and legacy that was set by our own board member, Coach McNeely. And he was there front and center with, as well as with other board members to cheer on our boys' basketball team. They continue to live up to that standard of success. And so, they won their third straight title. And so, they had a great showing. They showed a lot of grit, able to come from behind a 20-point deficit, and kept their composure, just as a, the city of champions, as we do. And they were able to come back and win that game and take that momentum on into the final game as well. Although these young men are very talented on the athletic court, and we appreciate that, and we so, we're so proud of that, and we do revel in that success, I will also tell you, 10 of those basketball players had a 3.0 GPA or higher, and one had a 4.0 GPA. So, again, in addition to the athletic success that they're distributing on the court and the field of competition, they're just as focused, if not more, in the classroom. And so, we're, we're proud of that as well. We, we have a brief video that we want to show you summarizing the events from this past weekend at the state tournament.
Man, it's real hard. It's really, really hard, you know? A lot of people just see, we've got some talent. We've got a lot of talent.
They're at our mercy. They should be at our mercy. We said you're gonna have to communicate. Go score! Get your eyes on the rim and go score! I had no doubt in my mind we were gonna win this game.
This is just such an awesome accomplishment. I'm so excited for our basketball team, our players, our coaches, our fans, the city of champions. Everyone is so proud of all the work that our boys went through to accomplish this feat. This was an incredible, once-in-a-lifetime win. And so, we are so very proud of them.
So, you know, winning this thing is crazy because I'm winning it for the fourth time, and, you know, we're making history. You know, all the work we put in is finally, you know, coming out at the end. You know, you see, we see what we do, so it's very exciting.
This team, we refuse to lose. There's levels to legacy. And, uh, and that just hit me, like, man, there's levels to the things we're doing right now.
Thank you. All right, and then the last item I have is just, today marks the start of the last nine weeks of the school year. So, we got about nine weeks left in the school year. And about four to six of those weeks, our students will be engaged in various assessments, whether it's STAR, End of Course, or the TELPASS, which is Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System Test. It's a long title, but, but nevertheless, they'll be engaged in various tests as we end this year, work our way toward the May graduation date, and then get prepared for the summer learning and next school year. So, a lot going on, but really proud of our team and our students and all the work that everyone's doing. So, Madam President, that concludes the superintendent's report, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. We will now move to recognitions, and I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Winifred Goodman and Tiara Richard.
So, we'll open recognitions with Dr. Goodman and Dr. Nix giving our first recognition.
Good evening, Madam President, Board, and Dr. Smith. We are excited to introduce you to seven trailblazers who make up our first cohort of Future Leaders Academy in Duncanville. So, first, thank you so much for your investment in our staff. Thank you so much for that. And we have those seven individuals who are part of that cohort. They'll come up at this time and be recognized. And while they're coming up, I'll just tell you, they are halfway through their first semester at UNT Dallas, and they are all still smiling. Even tonight, as we asked how things were going, they were all still smiling and saying everything is going well. You were able to see them before on the screen, but we are excited that they are here in person. And first, we have Mr. Quintanilla, Ernest Quintanilla, who is at Kennamore Middle School. Next, we have Mr. Dasal. Adam Dasal is a special education teacher at Harden Intermediate. Amanda Rodriguez is at Harden Intermediate as well, as a bilingual teacher. And then, Paul Grounds, who is at Duncanville High School as an art teacher this year. Next, we have Arantina Banister, who is at Bird Middle School. She is the math center teacher. And then Jessica Ford, who is the teacher specialist and our previous Teacher of the Year for Elementary. She's a teacher specialist at Acton Elementary this year, Charles Acton Leadership Academy. And then, also, last, we have Mr. D. Evan Johnson, who is the Assistant Core Director at Duncanville High School. So, we are so excited and happy that they took this journey with us and that you all invested in them again. So, thank you so much. We know that this is a commitment on their end as well, and so, they brought some people with them tonight, and I've asked that they stand up and be recognized. And so, if you are here to support, because they will need support as they go through this master's program, and so, we're going to ask their family and friends, school family and friends as well, who came, if you'll stand up as well. Thank you all for your commitment. We are so excited that you all chose to go on this journey with us. Thank you.
Madam President, may I have a word? Yes, yes, Dr. Smith would like to say something.
Well, just want to thank the Board. You know, this is the Board of the Year. And when you're the Board of the Year, you, you do innovative things. You do different things to stand out and prepare your district. And this Board really invested in leadership. They felt that that was a priority. And so, to be able to contribute financially to your education so that you can further your career, you can further your knowledge, and be leaders in Duncanville and beyond, I just want to thank the Board for investing in the leaders in Duncanville ISD.
Thank you for taking the step with us. Yes, go ahead.
And I'd like to thank you for modeling being a lifelong learner to your peers and even to your students, allowing your parents to see that it's never too late to go back to school and finish. And most of my friends are in corporate, and none of them have student loans. I'm in education, and I have a huge student loan. So, I don't understand how that works. And so, I'm just grateful that you guys took the challenge and glad to be a part of a Board that saw the value in helping you with the financial piece. So, we are here to support you. Good luck, and we're looking to hear great things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so to continue recognitions, we move on to Made with Pride in Duncanville. This is where we honor a student, teacher, and a staff member for the month of March. So, our first person who we'll be recognizing is Ms. Henrietta Harris, a third-grade teacher at Alexander Elementary School. Ms. Harris, would you come down? All right, so Ms. Harris was actually nominated by counselor, by the Alexander Counselor, Ms. Tabitha Powell. And she was recognized, is being recognized, excuse me, as our Made with Pride in Duncanville Teacher of the Month. Ms. Harris absolutely models teacher leadership in a very professional way. She, the way she carries herself, her work ethic, her love for students, even if she's wearing a suit, she will be down on that floor with those kids, learning with them, talking with them. So, you'll see her in every professional setting. She knows what it takes to engage with kids and show them that she really, really cares. And not only does she do that with her students, she does that with her peers. Other teachers turn to her because they know that she's someone they can relate to, they can talk to. And so, she is a teacher leader. She is one showing others the way and demonstrating what it really means to engage students, to educate students, to really bring them along, and just really developing them. When we went to go surprise her at the campus before spring break, you should have seen those kids. They were so excited and so happy to celebrate their teacher and just recognize her for all of the wonderful things that she does in the classroom every single day with them. So, for this and many, many other reasons, we would like to recognize Ms. Henrietta Harris as our Made with Pride in Duncanville Teacher of the Month. Thank you. All right, so up next, we have our Made with Pride in Duncanville Student of the Month, Mr. London Lavender. Mr. Lavender? London is an eighth-grade student at Bird Middle School. And he was actually nominated by the front office staff at Bird, where he is a, a student aide. So, he helps out at the front office frequently, and is just one of those students that welcomes guests when they come in. He escorts students to classes. He is that smiling face you see when you walk in the building. And when we went to go and surprise London, he was shocked, first off. He, he didn't say much. He just sat there with a big grin on his face, just really excited to be recognized. And the entire front office staff came down to surprise him in class because they were so proud of him and, and really so grateful for all that he does. He has an exceptional attitude. He exhibits eagerness and politeness when he is given any task, and he just does it efficiently and quickly. There was one time where there was a new student who came to campus, and he was asked to show this new student around the school. He introduced himself to this new student with a friendly and just warmness that really was welcoming. It's the sort of thing you want to receive when you come to Duncanville. And he gave the student all these details about the school, where to go, all the inside tips, just really made him feel so connected to Bird. And that is the sort of thing that is just really engaging and beautiful. And so, London, we want to thank you and congratulate you as our Made with Pride in Duncanville Student of the Month. All right, so last but not least, we have our Made with Pride in Duncanville Staff Member of the Month, Ms. Tiffany Wilkerson. Tiffany? So, Ms. Wilkerson here. She is our College Career and Military Readiness Coordinator. And her role, she is preparing students and setting up the pathways for our students to, to seek their next journey, to advance into college, a career of their choice, or the military. So, she helps them see where they're going. And in her role, she really takes that to heart. And you see it in everything she does. You see it in her positive attitude. If you've ever been to an event or any sort of activity that Ms. Wilkerson has planned to help prepare our students, you know you've been to an event. She wants to make it memorable for you. She makes it so special that you walk away knowing that you have learned something new about the district and what we offer, and learned about the opportunities that are available to you as a student and as a parent for your child here in the district. And that's a big thing, that's special. She takes it very personal in trying to provide those opportunities for students. For example, she's always working with our higher education partners, industry partners, community members. She is one of those people who are out there being the face of the district, and she does a great job really representing what it means to be in Duncanville ISD. And so, we want to congratulate you, Ms. Wilkerson, on being made our Made with Pride in Duncanville Staff Member of the Month. And as we play the video that shows and highlights each of our student, teacher, and staff member, I'd like to also ask the family members who are here representing all of our honorees if they wouldn't mind standing also. Families, if you're here. And now, we have a video which gives you just a little bit more insight into each of these individuals and why they were chosen as Made with Pride in Duncanville.
Duncanville ISD congratulates the following students, staff member, and teacher who are made with pride in Duncanville.
My name is Henrietta Harris. I am a first-grade teacher at Alexander Elementary. The two things that it takes to be good at my job, one is a lot of patience, and the second thing is a lot of love. Those two things are very important because working with children, we have to have patience so that we're able to teach them what they need to learn and also help them when they're scared and when they're afraid, when they lose courage. I also say love because it has to come from the heart. It comes from the passion. It comes from making sure every child is successful and making sure that they do their very best.
It's safe to say that I love my job, and I'm truly passionate about the work that I do. I think that when you feel that the work you are doing is purposeful and meaningful, and you see the students that are being impacted by the work, it continues to drive you and push you and motivate you just to keep going. So, my love for education developed right here in Duncanville.
Hi, my name is London Lavender. I am an eighth grader at Bird Middle School. I help out people. I do what I need to do with a quick yes ma'am, no ma'am, yes sir, no sir, because that's what you do. You show respect to others, even if, even if the job is hard, you still do it anyway. The reason I do is because most people forget that one selfless act of kindness can change an entire person's world. And when I do those selfless acts of kindness, I believe that it helps them out every single day.
These honorees truly are made with pride in Duncanville.
Thank you very much. I love learning about people every time you bring them to. That's great. Do we have communications from? Okay. We do not have any communications from citizens regarding pending agenda item. We will now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Second. Okay, the motion was made by Phil McNeely, seconded by Carla Fahy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion carries seven oh. We will now move to the, sorry? We will now move to the Action Agenda Item A. Consider Approval of the 2022-23 Academic Calendar. The presenter is Dr. Jaretha Jordan.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. I am pleased to present to you the Academic Calendar Planning for the 2022-2023 Academic School Year. The Calendar Committee, which consisted of approximately 50 parents, teachers, staff, students, campus administrators, and central office staff members, met on two different occasions to review the requirements, develop a wish list, and a set of priorities for the 22-23 school year. During this time, they also developed three draft calendars that best met the needs of Duncanville ISD students and staff. This was a dynamic group of individuals who chose to meet after school. During these two meetings, they reviewed sample calendars from all over the metroplex. They brainstormed current concerns and solutions. They represented their campuses and departments, and they collaborated on what was best for all students. We had two students attend both meetings. We had two students attend both meetings, and they did a phenomenal job of actually facilitating a lot of the discussion about what is best for us at Duncanville High School. In addition to those two students, we had makeup virtual sessions, so we had four other high school students participate virtually as well. This team truly exemplified unstoppable excellence from beginning to end. So the Academic Calendar Committee developed three sample calendars. So you can see on the screen an overview, which will highlight the first day and last day of school for students, fall break, and then early release days. Last year, the board approved to increase the number of instructional days for students to 180. As we continue to achieve the COVID climb, the Calendar Committee decided to continue with a 180-day calendar again this school year. A benefit to having a 180-day calendar is having 81,000 instructional minutes versus the required 75,600 minutes. So this will give us an additional 12 days of instruction. This year, we had a couple of bad weather days. Since we have additional minutes built into our calendar, we will not have to use our April 18th bad weather makeup day. So that's one of the benefits to going to a 180-day calendar. So we'll dig a little deeper, looking just at the options. Option A, school, students will start school the first week of August. School will end before Memorial Day. We will have one week for fall break. Teachers, students, everyone loved our one-week fall break this year. And then option A also includes four early-release professional development days. If you look at option A as well, you'll notice that the first semester and second semester days are pretty much even for option A. So students will have 87 days in the first semester and 93 school days in the second semester. We know that second semester is where a lot of our testing occurs, so it's okay to have more school days there. And then our teachers will have the 187 teacher days, which is one of the requirements, and our students will attend school 180 school days. Calendar option B, students would start school the second week in August. They would still end before Memorial Day. We still have one week of fall break. A difference between A and B is that we will return from winter break the second week in January. So it's a little bit of later return from winter break, and then we have four early-release days included into the calendar. Again, option B, teachers have a 93 teacher workdays in first semester and 94 in second semester. We have 88 student school days in the first semester and 92. Again, second semester has so many testing days built in, and so it's nice to have more instructional days in that second semester. 187 teacher workdays total and 180 student school days. Calendar option C, students would start school the third week in August, so much later than we did this year. There's only a three-day fall break in October, and students will return from winter break the second week in January. If you notice in calendar option C, students will actually end school after Memorial Day. First semester and second semester, if you look, students have 83 school days in the first semester and 97 school days, so many more school days in the second semester. But then our teacher workdays are 187, and our student school days are 180. An academic calendar survey was distributed in both English and Spanish to all of our stakeholders, so that's parents, staff, students, and community members. We wanted to make sure that our stakeholders had adequate time to not only review the calendar options but give us feedback, so we left the survey open for two weeks. We are happy to share that we had 1,731 responses to the calendar survey. So one of the questions, the first question on the survey, is how are you a member of the Duncanville ISD family? We want to know. Their feedback is important, but we also want to know which group is giving us what feedback. So we had for, in this group, we had, it was pretty balanced. Forty-four percent of our staff members responded, and 42% of our parent and guardians responded, and then we had 12% of our students respond, and then 0.6% of our community members. Next slide. So we distributed the survey in English and Spanish, so you will see both calendar options, or all three calendar options, in English and Spanish. Calendar option A, when you add it up, has 26.8% of the votes. Calendar option B has 50.7, and then calendar option C has 22.5 when we add both the English and Spanish. And so calendar option B had the majority of the votes for our staff, for our students, and for our families. With calendar B having the majority of the votes from our stakeholders and meeting the priority wishlist request from the Calendar Committee, which was to embed professional development time into our calendar, our teachers work really hard, and they deserve to go home to their families and have some time to decompress and work on their social and emotional wellness as well. So we really had to get creative of ways to build in PD for them during the school day. Our recommendation is that the board adopts calendar option B for the 2022-23 academic calendar. I am happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
I think we do not have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve? No, 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 I was just going to make the motion. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve calendar B as presented for the 2022-23 academic school calendar?
Second.
Motion was made by Phil McNeely, seconded by Cassandra Phillips. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven, zero. We'll now move to action item B, Youth 180 Memorandum of Understanding. The presenter is Pamela Brown.
Greetings to the Board President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. I will be presenting the Youth 180 Memorandum of Understanding for you today. Youth 180 has worked with Duncanville ISD in past years and has provided services to Summit and other campuses, primarily at the middle school level. Due to the pandemic, we paused their services to limit campus visitors, but we would like to reengage this partnership. The program educates youth and parents on coping, decision-making, and problem-solving skills with substance abuse. The specialists that would come on campus once a week would use a state-approved curriculum to provide prevention information to students. They also provide counseling and other outpatient substance information for our youth.
Next slide.
The curriculum that the specialists use is provided by the Texas Health and Human Services Commission. The goal of the prevention program is again to provide education to prevent drug use and to provide problem-solving and coping skills for our students and their families to use.
Next slide.
The program is free to Duncanville ISD. We are only responsible for providing the students to participate in the program along with the classroom space. Our plan is to utilize the services by Youth 180 at Summit one time per week, provide parent training programs for middle school and secondary families, and we will also consider using their services at our middle school campuses to provide prevention information and support.
Next slide.
We are recommending that you allow us to reengage in this partnership with Youth 180 and to approve the MOU for the 21, 22, and 22, 23 school years. Are there any questions?
Madam President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hello, Ms. Brown. My question is, so I find that it is a great program that you presented, and thank you for that, but are we, are we using it? Are we being resourceful in activating the use of this for us here at Duncanville?
So pending board approval, we will activate the use of this program. And prior to COVID, they were coming out weekly to work with the youth, especially at the Summit campus.
So we did see them partaking this, that's correct?
Yes, yes, yes. They provided weekly students, the counselors. It's usually based on counselor referral or social worker referral, but they provided a list of students, and they came out and worked with them every week. It was only paused due to COVID.
Thank you.
I have a question on the MOU. Just the one bullet that said, provide the necessary shelter, equipment, and supplies in the event of a disaster to prevention staff? I'm not clear on that.
If there, tornado, if there is an emergency, that they would shelter in place with us, and they would just be with our staff. That is my understanding of it. Item, okay.
That makes sense.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Youth 180 and Duncanville ISD for the school years 2021 through 22 and 2022 through 23?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Dr. Ivory made the motion, seconded by Jackie Colton. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven, oh. We will now move to action item C, consider approval of marketing purchase. The presenter is Connie Wallace.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. Effective marketing is essential to broadening awareness of our innovative programs and recruiting efforts. Today, you guys had the opportunity to see two videos produced in-house, but sometimes it's necessary for us to outsource video production. Over the years, we've partnered with Whitfield Films, and we plan to use them for the upcoming marketing season for our choice programs, summer learning options, as well as recruitment of staff. The aggregate of these marketing efforts may potentially exceed $50,000 for this school year. The administration is recommending the approval to utilize Whitfield Films and gain, and grant, excuse me, the superintendent approval to make marketing purchases for goods and services that may exceed $50,000 through June 30th, 2022.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the listed purchases of services through Whitfield Films and approves the superintendent to make marketing purchases for services and goods, goods above $50,000 through June 30th, 2022?
So moved.
Second. Okay, the motion was made by Janet Bearcruz, seconded by Carla Fahy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven, zero. We will now move to information and discussion items. The first item is Budget Development Timeline and Budget Overview for 2022-23 Budget. The presenter is Dr. Ed Bigby.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith. Here I am again, without, sadly enough, without a whole lot of new information, but like to cover a little bit and then talk some about some new things that we've, we've seen taking place. And then Dr. Jordan will pick it up after I've finished the financial part. Okay, next slide. This is the timeline. If you notice, we have added on the 31st of this month, the budget workshop. And then we're updating you tonight. So in 10 days, we'll, we'll meet again to discuss the budget much more depth. The 11th, we'll update you again on, at the regular meeting. Next slide. And none of this has changed. It's the same process. We'll be asking you to, to adopt the budget on the 20th of June at the regular scheduled meeting. Okay, next slide. The same numbers that showed you last time, that if we use the ADA or average daily attendance that we had at the end of the first semester, what next year would look like, different property values. Once again, if you remember, anything above 2.5% in property value growth, we lose the state funding to offset that, and our tax rates compressed so that the property owner only sees a 2.5% increase in the taxes that are due by, do that by changing the tax rate, or the state dictates to us what we can set for a tax rate. So these are a little bit gloom and doom numbers. Hopefully, their, their worst-case scenario is we get closer, we'll, we'll be able to see some better and closer numbers to, to give you. All right, next slide. Wanted to discuss just a minute about enrollment versus what we get funded off of enrollment. Our enrollment counts that you see, which is a substantial increase, counts heads, basically. When the state counts heads for funding, pre-K kids only count one half, even though we're now full-day pre-K. They said that they instituted a early education allotment, which when they did, they took it out of the other allotment, but we could use that to fund that other half a day. So we're still only funded a half a day for pre-K kids, even though we keep them all day long. So as, as we talk about enrollment, it's great to see those numbers, but just keep in mind that, that the pre-K kids, even though they're small, they just count a half as far as funding goes. Of course, the more we get, the more halves we get, so it's, it certainly helps. But keep that in mind as we talk about enrollments. Okay, next slide. I think we talked about this a little bit, about hold harmless. If we have more than 10% of our students not attending, TA changed how they calculate that. It used to be based on your entire year. Now they're going back to the 1920 school year, which was the last normal school year that we had, the beginning, first four, six weeks. So they're allowing that to count as the number that we determine the 10% from. And for those four, four, six weeks, we, our attendance was 93.75. So anything from 83.75 down, this year, we don't have to count as far as our funding goes. The next slide kind of explains that a little bit. Through February, we had 12 of those days, which the difference is between 89.76 and 88.8. Small difference, less than 1%, but it's about $80,000 that we don't gain, but we wouldn't lose by them changing this. So that's a plus for our side, and hopefully, it's not the last one. There are some, there's some movement in Austin to try to help us out some more. The House Public Ed Committee sent a letter to the governor suggesting very strongly that, that he put in place a hold harmless that would basically cover us this school year and put about $4 million back into our funding. So we're, that's an attaboy for the House Public Ed Committee. I haven't heard anything since then, since they sent that to the governor, but it's on his desk. And so far, the Senate hasn't done the same thing, but the House Public Ed, who's very public ed-friendly, sent the letter to the governor. We'll let you know more about that as we hear more. Okay, next slide. This is probably make you dizzy if you look at it very long, but this is each day from November to February in our attendance level. The black line across the top is 93%, which historically, we've ended the year at 93% just about every year. The dark purple line is February. You see two dramatic jumps. The first low day in February was an early-release day, so most of them just released the whole day. And the last one was the bitter cold day that we had on a Friday, and, and they, they stayed home. They stay home on Friday a lot anyway, but it really made a difference then. The green line is January. If you notice, that's by far the worst ADA we had through the year. If you remember, that's, everybody went out on Christmas and got COVID. Or were scared of COVID, so they, they stayed home mostly through the whole month. But I was a little bit optimistic about how many of those days actually bump up toward the 93%. We have a few that bring it down, particularly January, but it's a little encouraging that maybe we're, we're past a trend of, of the kids staying home. So we'll, we'll keep a track on that, and I'll keep graphing it, and we can look and see how the, the rest of the months come out. The nice thing in February, typically after January, our ADA goes down. But as you can see by the dark purple line, it's, it's, it's higher than, than what some of the other months have been. So that's a plus for us, or we hope it is. A little report on the bond refunding. Those bonds have been sold now. You approved a parameter order, if you remember, back in, in the February meeting. The parameter for the non-taxable bonds, we had to get at least 2.5% or less and had to save at least $2 million. Well, actually, we wound up at a 2.23% with a $2.5 million savings. And the 107.2 million of taxable bonds... And the 107.2 million of taxable bonds, uh, parameter was 3.25 and a savings of 14 million. Uh, the tax ra, the interest rate we got was 3.02 or saved 17.7 million dollars. So between the two, that's close to a, a $20.2 million saving for our taxpayers. Uh, just an aside, since 2005, the refunding that you've done saved almost $60 million in debt that would have been paid by our taxpayers, so, so you've been very, very upfront and, and, and very proactive about keeping those interest rates as low as we can. Okay? Next slide. I answer any questions you might have about the financial part, and then Dr. Jordan will take you home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Smith. I am excited to give you just an ESER update. As you know, U.S. Congress has provided financial support to districts to help address the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. These funds have been designed to provide emergency relief, help districts safely reopen schools and mitigate the learning loss. Duncanville ISD received for approximately 4.3 million in ESER I funds, 11.75 million in ESER II funds, and approximately 24.9 million in ESER III funds. Last month, I shared with you our planning process for ESER III. Tonight, I'm going to walk you through our planning process for ESER II. As a reminder, it makes total sense for us to talk about ESER I, ESER II, and ESER III. However, our funds were not distributed in that order, so we received ESER I funds, then ESER III funds, and ESER II. So that's the reason why we're discussing them out of sequence. Next slide, please. So as we continue to make the COVID climb, it is imperative for us to ensure our students have time to learn by creating lifelong learners through enrichment, acceleration, recovery opportunities, and most importantly, providing them with new experiences. Next slide. Duncanville ISD is taking a comprehensive approach to help ensure the pandemic does not have a long-lasting negative impact on our students. And so we are focused on these five areas using our ESER II funds, continuing to provide pandemic support. That's so important. We started it way back in that spring break that we don't want to ever go back to, um, and we're still providing that support to our families and students. You, as the board, approved to increase our instructional days, and we will continue to have a 180-day calendar. That's important. We are going to reimagine summer. I don't know about you, but as a kid, I did not want to go to summer school, and I know many of our students and families may not want to. So it's important for us to redesign what summer looks like in Duncanville ISD, and so we are working to make summer epic for our students here. We are also continuing to provide and work through providing high-quality instruction and making sure that our resources and support is aligned and intentional. So over the next few months, we will be working through this process with a variety of stakeholders to make sure that we are being intentional about the use of our ESER funds. We heard Dr. Bigby, um, financial state is so important right now, and so to be wise and good stewards with our funds is important, so we will focus on these five main areas. So what you will see or may hear about happening over the next few months on the next slide is the following process. And so we will have ESER II meetings. Every department has a budget manager. That's just someone who is, is the spokesperson for their department. And so we will discuss the allowable use of the funds. We will discuss our district's priorities as it aligns to our strategic plan, and then we will work to align our spending. So budget managers will be charged with that in the meeting, and then they will go back and talk to their departments, campuses, leaders, families. Then after the budget managers have the meeting, then they will receive their ESER II allocations. So it's almost like your kids at home, right? You don't want to give them the $20 and say, "Go." First want to talk about, just here's our priorities, here's where we're going, here's the process, and then give them their allocation. Once they have their allocation, they will have a set amount of time to identify the expenditures needed, again, based on the allowable use and our priorities. And then all of those will come into one area, and we will review those to make sure that it is aligned, make sure that it's meeting our current needs, and finally, we will approve those expenditures. And so this process will take a little bit of time, but I wanted to share it with you so that you are aware of what we're doing with our ESER II funds, know that we do have a timeline, and know that we do have a plan. Next slide. Achieving the COVID climb is a marathon, not a sprint. We are working diligently to be intentional and focused on our students, on our staff, and our current needs, and making sure that we are aligning our spending to what we need right now to help our students. I am happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your report.
No, no, no.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I love what you said about the reimagine part of summer. I will be really honest, I attended summer school, yes, I did, and it was not fun, and it's, it was like punishment. So what I'm hearing you say is that we're going to have these kids return back into school and that it, they're gonna, you revamped this whole idea of coming into school after a long year. So is that what I'm hearing, is that this is going to be, uh, more attractive for them to come back and close those gaps?
Yes. Our goal is for students pre-K through 12
Yes.
to really come home, come to school and play, and they learn through hands-on, engaging experiments. They have no idea that they're learning through STEM and through
Absolutely.
just different activities. Yes, that is our goal.
I love that approach. I'm supportive of all of that. Tell me a little bit about the teachers that will be sitting in these positions after the, after May. Are they volunteering? And of course, I know all that.
Each program is a little different, so EPIC, I think I mentioned that earlier, um, is an acronym. You guys have been with me for a little bit, so you know, have acronym for everything. E is enrichment, and so for our programs that are enriching our students, hands-on building their capacity, we're actually partnering with an outside company, and they will provide not only the resources for our students to STEM, to build, to have hands-on engaging, but they also have the instructors that will come in. What we will do for Duncanville is provide a teaching assistant for each one of those classes. Um, and so for the enrichment part, we're not necessarily hiring our own Duncanville teachers. We're having partnered staff, but the company will bring them in. For our P, which is post-secondary, we will have Duncanville teachers, um, that's providing the support to our post-secondary component of summer, so that's our advanced academic, that's our bridges, that's our credit recovery, and so we will be hiring there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carla Fahey. Thank you, Dr. Jordan, for your presentation. I have a question about something you mentioned, department budget managers. Is that one staff member from every department or every school who works with the principal with budget or a committee? Or tell me a little bit more about a department budget manager.
So a department budget manager is one person from each department, and so our chief of schools will represent our principals. So they will work to solicit feedback from our principals to get input, but it's one person from each department that forms the team.
At the SLT department?
Yes.
Okay. I was thinking departments at the high school and, okay, all right.
At the central office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, for your presentation. You're always so exciting and bring us such good information. So I do have a question regarding the summer program. How many students do we hope to, uh, serve?
Our goal, and we're still in early stages, our goal is to serve all of our students. That's our hope. We want to offer as much summer programming that we could go to our maximum capacity. Again, we dream big, right? Um, as we are finalizing and looking at locations, I will be able to bring those numbers back to you, but we're not going to put a lid and turn away our students.
Will it be a full, how many hours per day and days per week?
So currently, all of our programs are full day, and we're looking at four days a week.
That's absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And Dr. Bigby, for you as well. We will now move to information discussion agenda item B, Templeton Demographics Update. Dr. Karen Halačka.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Smith. In accordance with strategic goals 2.2 and 6.1, I am pleased to welcome Mr. Bob Templeton with Templeton Demographics. He is here this evening to provide the board with an overview of our demographic trends in the area. Uh, Mr. Templeton, as you know, has been a longtime partner of Duncanville ISD, and we are pleased to have him here with us this evening to share with you.
So I'll turn it over to Mr. Templeton.
Well, good evening, Board President, members of the board. Dr. Smith, it is my pleasure to be with you tonight. So enjoyed the board meeting. It's so good to see good news and got to see some really good news for your school district tonight. We do work with many school districts in the area, and I'll start by just touching on the enrollment history that we've seen this year. I don't see a clicker up here, so I'll... All right, there we go. Very good. So this year was good news. You had positive enrollment growth, which you can see for the last several years, you've not had enrollment growth. Many surrounding school districts also had negative enrollment again this year, so we did see an additional impact on the COVID pandemic with enrollment patterns across the state of Texas. So you had some positive news. That was really good news. It was, um, we saw that lift a little bit at the, the elementary grade level. You'll notice your first grade cohort was about 15%, so you had a really good bump in first grade this year, and it's so important to get those elementary grades in here because they tend to, to stay. But very good news with the enrollment pattern this year. Next slide. The housing market also very strong. That's been one of the real unusual factors with the pandemic. The pandemic caused record-breaking job loss and a spike in the unemployment rate. Normally, when that happens, we see new housing decline, we see depressed home values. We actually saw the opposite of that. We saw an increase in housing activity. We've seen an increase in the value of the homes in Duncanville ISD. We're building somewhere around 70 to 80 new homes per year. It's primarily in those green shaded areas, which is the, uh, Daniel's Farm area in the Alexander Attendance Zone. It's also in the Capella Development, which is in the north part of the Billharts Elementary Zone. It's also in Ten Mile Creek. You've got about 700 future lots, so there is still going to be somewhere around 70 to 100 homes per year, single-family homes per year for the foreseeable future. Next slide is the multifamily picture. We've got a couple of multifamily projects under construction, about 350 apartment units that are in construction. You can see they're in those turquoise shaded areas. Those are the future multifamily areas that are in the planning stages. Next slide. This is the really good news, the transfer patterns. So you had a significant improvement in the district transfers coming into the district, over 1,060. That's almost 400 more than you had the previous year. Just to put that in another perspective, that's about $2.5 million of revenue change just in that movement from the 365 to the 1,060. You'll notice it was primarily Dallas ISD, Cedar Hill ISD, Arlington ISD, uh, but that's very good news, a change. Now, the next slide is showing the transfers out. Little bit of movement there, but not as much, so we definitely saw it kind of stabilize. And when we really look at the details of that, you had multiple districts and charters where the number went down, so we did see some improvement in there. We did see a little bit of an increase at Grand Prairie, a little bit at the, um, UME Preparatory Academy, but overall, it's kind of softened. The net change was positive. I think that's the real takeaway. Next slide. The enrollment projections. Now, these are the elementary campus and the intermediate campus projections.
Hold on just a moment.
Yes.
Madam President, ma, have a moment. So can you go back to those two slides real quick for me? Thank you, Bob. Wanted to ask you something. So on the transfer piece, um, we discussed earlier that, uh, some of the, the transfer data was referencing students that are zoned to Duncanville and had chosen to go elsewhere. And so they are coming back. I, I want to make that distinction. It's a very important distinction. So can you speak to that?
That is true. So this, uh, the transfer out numbers, those are kids that physically live in the district, and they're transferring to some charter schools that are located within the district and to some of the surrounding school districts. But I'm, I referenced that we saw several decreases of areas that it is they're coming back to Duncanville ISD. So there is a significant change, and I think it goes to the amazing job that you're doing of, of promoting yourself, talking about yourself. I was on your webpage this morning. Webpage looks great. It was celebrating the basketball accomplishment, and it was also very, very easy for me to go down and look to where I could find out information on schools of choice. And so those were very, very positive things that I saw. So, but this data is definitely showing a improvement in the transfer pattern. It's the softening in the transfers out, and it's also an increase in the transfers in. The net change is almost 400 students difference to the positive. That's what really did have a big, big impact on the fact that your enrollment went positive by about 200 kids this year. And if you keep that, if that keeps happening, that literally can turn the, the table on the, um, the, the numbers, the enrollment pattern, because what's also happening is they're choosing to go to charters at the elementary level, but they're also coming back at the secondary level, middle school and high school. That does create some challenges academically, because then they're having to, you know, bring them up to the needs that, that are, that they're, that they've been missing out on. So the battle is really for kindergarten and pre-K. That's where the battle is. You're capturing about 60% of the kindergarteners that live in the district. 60% right now are choosing to come to Duncanville ISD. There's room for about a 20 to 25%. You're not going to get 100%, but you, you can shoot for, have a target, a goal of getting in that 70, 75%. That's going to change this enrollment forecast significantly into the future. At these, we'll go now to the campus pages.
Thank you, and, excuse me for interrupting.
Yes, no, any other, any other thoughts there?
And thank you, Madam President, for giving me that role.
You know, the bottom line challenge for your enrollment outlook is your high school grade levels are a lot bigger than your kindergarten and your first grade numbers. I mean, the kindergarten class is roughly about 570 kids. It's about how many are in kindergarten district-wide. The 12th grade number is, um, about 1,000. So you, you see the challenge with the numbers. You've got such large secondary grade levels compared to those incoming grade levels. So we really do need to see the turn there and that lift. And when it does lift, it will change the enrollment at those elementary campuses, literally several hundred kids. So at this level, I am projecting that we're going to have about 4,100 students in five years. So you can see, I am building in a little bit of a return. I am being optimistic that we're going to see some of that, just a little bit of incremental improvement in those kindergarten numbers. And so you can see, Alexander is getting to about 430 in five years. You've got, um, your largest elementary would be the Billharts Elementary at about 573 in three years, and then you can see, most of the others are in that 400-ish range. At your intermediate schools, you've got Daniel Intermediate at almost 500 kids, and then you've got the Harden Intermediate at 461, and Brandenburg Intermediate at about 360. Next slide. Here's the secondary campuses at your middle schools. It's the Kenimer Middle School that's the largest at about 900 students next year, and then you've got Byrd Middle School at 601. The Duncanville High School, as you can see, its largest years are going to be in the next couple of years. So those, those smaller incoming middle school grade levels are going to kind of, the high school's going to peak in about three years, two to three years, and then it's going to drift off just a little bit. Now, should we change the narrative at the elementaries? Those numbers in the, the years six through 10 at the high school could change. But the challenge is those elementary grade numbers are so much smaller that eventually, that's what's going to cause that slight drop at the high school. Now, keep in mind, I always encourage districts, don't get too caught up in the back end of the forecast. the forecast, year six through 10. A lot can change. So from a planning perspective, I would encourage you to really look at the next three to five years. So those three to five year numbers at the elementary campuses, the three to five year numbers at your middle and high school, the high school's going to be at about 4,500 kids for the foreseeable, for the next three years. So that's going to be a reality for them. Key takeaways on the next slide. Duncanville did see a positive increase this year, about 1.8% enrollment growth of about 210 students. We had very good increases at pre-K, first, second, fourth, fifth, seventh, ninth. Those fifth, seventh, those middle school cohorts, that's a lot of times this charter return. So they're wanting to get here to be a part of your extracurricular, your athletics. You know, you have such a strong reputation there that those kids want to have a, that experience of the athletics and fine arts. You've got six actively building subdivisions. There's about 700 future lots and I say you're building about 70 to 90 homes per year. There's about 350 multifamily units that are in the planning s- stages. And this transfer pattern, I think, was really good news and I think that's something to be, really be, um, to be proud of. The transfer pattern did show a significant increase and it did improve by about 395 students. That's just a real quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Oh, great news.
Good news.
Great news. Any other comments or questions? I think we're going to study this more. I, I learn better when I hear it. So I got a lot of good information right there. Thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
Very much. We'll now move to the information discussion agenda, item C, 2022 to 2023 Dallas College Partnership. And Dr. Jordan.
Good evening again, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Smith. In 2020, 21 Duncanville ISD partnered with Dallas College to sponsor our early college high school, PTEC, which is Pathways and Technology in Early College High School, TSTEM, Texas Science, Technology, Engineering and Mathematics Dual Credit Opportunities for our students. Dallas College awarded 73 associate degrees and 16 career and technical education certificates to our 2021 Duncanville High School graduating seniors. Through this partnership, students can earn 60-plus credit, college credit hours, associate degrees and certificates at Dallas College, as well as earn transferable credits to four year universities. Recently, all seven Dallas community colleges merged into one, Dallas College. The merge of DCCD becoming one college, now Dallas College, will prove to be beneficial for the district. Instead of having seven different MOUs with different campuses, we are now able to benefit from one consolidated MOU. This will allow us to create course crosswalks for pathways at all of our campuses if needed. For example, we can offer construction technology through North Lake Campus and graphic designs through the Eastfield Campus that once we weren't able to offer to our students. We can secure professors to instruct our students and offer programs for certifications, licenses or an associate degree. So as we transition through the merger, we know that there are some growing pains, but this will benefit Duncanville and our students to provide the consistency that we need so that we're not unintentionally creating inequities for our students. At this time, I would like to welcome trustee Cliff Boyd to the podium to share additional details about Dallas College and our partnership.
Madam President, trustees. It's my honor and privilege to be here. I, uh, I tell everybody, I'm kind of like a kid in a candy store. With Dallas College being what it is today, it is the most unbelievable opportunities that exist. We, we are absolutely bar none, the greatest opportunity to change lives. And hearing what y'all had prepared today and how y'all are preparing your students to, for the future, as I told our chancellor, I said, that's our own, the site, on the job salesperson. And so we need to take and spend some special effort giving those special tools to those staff members who are the ones who can tell the truth about what we really have. But this opportunity that, that I'm in now is something that I wanted to, to take opportunity, having been where you guys sat from the city point of view and from Parkland point of view and all, uh, we've done a horrible job of telling the, the real story about what Dallas College has to offer. Uh, the more and more you learn about it, the more and more you're going to appreciate what it has the ability to do. And, uh, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but today I, I, I'm going to introduce our new chancellor, uh, chancellor, Dr. Justin Lennon. But, you know, my policy is, is, is to be able to get the word out and to be able to spread the word. And so I'm going to be speaking and our group is going to be going to each school board. I, I have in my district Cedar Hill, Duncanville, uh, Grand Prairie and Irving. And we'll be spending time not only with the school boards, but with the city council as well, because we're about economic development and we're talking about building future careers for people. And so I can't tell you in the short period of time, and it's been a long evening for y'all already, I know, but, uh, I, I want to invite y'all. Y'all are going to all be invited again as my guests down to, uh, El Centro to a gourmet meal. We'll, uh, do another show and tell for you down there while you're enjoying some of the greatest culinary that exists in Dallas County. So, uh, thank y'all for the opportunity. With that, I'd like to introduce to you our newest and most recent and greatest chancellor, Justin Lennon.
Well, thank you trustee Boyd. Uh, as you can tell, your community as well represented at Dallas College and we're fortunate to have trustee Boyd. Uh, he, he leads our, he's our finance chair, so he keeps us straight, um, and we're lucky to have him. So, um, Madam President, trustees and Dr. Smith, thanks for the opportunity for our team to be here. And we've brought the A-team here, uh, with us. We, we can't, um, you know, we can't dribble and shoot, kind of like what we saw in the, the video earlier, but this is our starting lineup here, uh, and we're, we're proud to have them here. Um, I'll, I'll introduce quickly, Dr. Ken Gonzalez, who's the, uh, new president of Mountain View Campus, Perla Malina, who is our board liaison, Dr. Shonda Floyd, who's our provost, and Anna Mays, who you'll hear a little bit more, uh, from in a minute, is our, uh, vice provost of educational partnerships. And Anna's team and your team work very closely together. Uh, and you can see the success in some of the, the data points that Anna will, uh, talk about and some that you've already heard. Um, but it is your commitment, uh, to your students, who are our students, our shared students together, um, that, uh, make a difference in changing those lives and changing our communities together. I, I am the, the new chancellor of Dallas College. I'm, um, on my fourth week. Last week was spring break, so it was the best so far. Um, but, uh, but I've been with Dallas College 16 and a half years. And so I have seen the evolution and growth of our early college high school PTEC, uh, programs. And, um, again, the impact that it has on those individuals and families. You know, I, I don't know about, um, all of you, what, what you were doing when you graduated high school, but I certainly, uh, didn't have the opportunity to have two years of college under my belt. Um, and thanks to, to our trustees, uh, and to Dallas College, you know, those are tuition free. Um, and so those students have such a leg up. So we appreciate the partnership that we have with each of you, uh, and, and with Dr. Smith and his team. And we look forward to seeking opportunities to expand that partnership. And so we've got a quick little video, I think we'll show to tell you a little bit more about Dallas College. There's a lot we could say, uh, but want to be respectful of your time. And then, uh, Anna Mays will come up and, and share a few data points with you. So thanks for the opportunity to be here. And if we can roll the video if we have it.
Thank you, sir. I want to, uh, thank all of you for, um, having Dallas College present today on the opportunities your students are experiencing as a result of our partnership. But I also want to recognize, um, the provost, Dr. Floyd. During the pandemic, um, our institutions, yours and ours, struggled with providing continuation of academic excellence to our students. And I want to recognize Dr. Floyd and the schools of leadership, um, that she administers for their contributions to helping us maintain, uh, what you just saw, um, and what you heard about the 2021 successes. And what I'm going to do is share with you a little bit about those success, success, uh, successes. Um, one of the things that the video mentioned is that we are affordable and we're a large community college that serves over 70,000 students. Next slide. But one of the major crises that we have in Dallas County is that, um, only 50% of the employers reported that they have the talent that they need in our community. And we, as Dallas College, feel a clear and present, um, um, interest in providing more , uh, students with the talent that is needed. Um, one of the things that we're really intent on, uh, with our partners, including Duncanville, is making sure students have a clear path to a living wage. Uh, we know that Dallas County living wage jobs require an education beyond high school, that nationwide that is the case, um, that 65% of the jobs of the future require an education beyond high school and that only 39% of our Dallas County adults have a college degree. So we're really trying to attain the Dallas thrives goal of having more than one in four living wage earners. We're trying to aim for one in two, uh, by, uh, 2030. And that is a very ambitious goal. Um, next slide. Um, one of the things that, um, Dr. Jordan mentioned is our success rates. Um, what, a, a major reason for our expansion of dual credit, early college high schools, PTECs and TSTEMs was to increase our degree attainment, increase the number of students who are graduating from high school who also earned a college or, uh, degree or certificate. Overall, last year in the midst of the pandemic, we, uh, were able to award 1,799 associate degrees and 559 certificates to high school seniors. And, um, as a contribution to their education, Dallas College and our board of trustees, including trustee Boyd, uh, contributed 17.3 million dollars in tuition waivers or scholarships. So that meant that they were able to attend free, not incur student loan debt. And, um, they were funded for over 293,000 college credits. And this represented 30% of all of our enrollments. Next slide, please. Um, we've increased the number of students who are attaining these associate degree, um, and certificates. And we now have 77 college and career readiness, uh, school models. Um, and you see the numbers on the slide. Duncanville obviously is one of our high school partners that has all three. Uh, you have an early college high school, a PTEC and a TSTEM. Um, and we are partnered in all three of those, uh, CCMR, um, models. Next slide, please. So here's the statistics specifically on Duncanville High School. We had 827 Duncanville High School students, um, participating in dual credit with Dallas College. Um, and you'll notice that they had a 79% success rate. That means in a college course, they earned an A, B or C. And this 79% success rate exceeds both the average success rate of dual credit students overall, which is 74%, as well as the average total, uh, adult, uh, college student, um, success rate. And that's, uh, about 67%. So you see they're exceeding, um, the success of their peers, um, both, uh, other high school students as well as, um, college students in general. Um, as I mentioned, we provide tuition scholarships. Um, Duncanville ISD and your, uh, high school provides the textbooks. That means these students can graduate with an associate degree or a certificate with no debt and have, um, a great start towards a four-year degree or towards employment, or both. Um, and as, uh, Dr. Jordan mentioned, um, we awarded 73 associate degrees and 16 CTE certificates to the graduates. Next slide, please. Um, one of the things that we really also, um, employ as a tool to help our students graduate and continue their education is Dallas County Promise. And as you know, Dunk- Duncanville is a participant in the Dallas Promise. Um, it helps them complete FAFSA, uh, financial aid applications, helps them think about which college they want to attend. Our dual credit students are also eligible for Dallas Promise if they did not finish their degree requirements or certificate. So for example, um, the, uh, students who are, uh, in the early college high school or, um, PTEC, um, if they didn't finish, um, their courses this, um, year, they, um, can come in the summer and use Dallas Promise funds, um, and continue till they complete. So we are assuring those students that they're going to complete and persist into, um, either employment or transfer to a baccalaureate degree. Um, we are also, uh, offering a baccalaureate degree in education now. And many of your students who are in the early college high school, who are considering education in the, um, K through second, uh, uh, grade, uh, the PK, uh, pre-kindergarten through, uh, second grade, um, um, teaching field, um, may be interested in this baccalaureate degree. Uh, it's an early childhood education baccalaureate degree, which is in great demand and, um, in, uh, high need. need in our district. And so we're employing marketing to these students to tell them about this opportunity because, again, they can use financial aid or Promise Funds to continue into the baccalaureate degree program and perhaps have a very low-cost tuition for the baccalaureate degree program as well. Next slide. Okay, I'd like to now introduce Dr. Kenneth Gonzalez, who is the President of Mountain View Campus, and he'll tell you a little bit more about his campus and what's coming.
Good evening, Dr. Smith. What a fantastic team, board members. You've done a fantastic job. It's been a great experience tonight to hear all the things that are happening in the district. A little bit about myself, I come from a blue-collar town, first-generation college student. I went to a large high school, played football, was a kicker, and went on to play college ball at BYU. I was there when Ty Detmer was quarterback. So I have a sense of what it's like to be part of a big high school with big athletic programs. One of the things I could tell easily was how intentional you all are and your team. And so the intentionality you could see come across in what you all are doing. So I want you to know that at Dallas College, the Mountain View Campus, as the president there, we're also very intentional about your students, about what they're experiencing. So I'd like to invite you to come to campus. I'll give you a tour, show you the new building we're going to have coming up, and we're excited about, the challenges that we're addressing so that your students have a better and better experience, a more engaging experience. So I look forward to the future of working with you, and I just want to give you an invitation to come and visit at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So members, that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think we have no questions, but thank you all for coming. Sorry, go ahead, Jackie.
I would like to thank you all for the partnership. You know, you all develop individuals so that they can live out their full, you know, life to the fullest, and we do the same thing. And just looking at the value of the associate's degree, that's at least $5,000 per student that the student nor the parents have to pay, nor do they have to take out a loan. So we salute you all for that. Not only that, I mean, you all have a number of innovative programs that you can just pick an area, you know, to plug into. So we just really, you know, appreciate our partnership and appreciate what you're doing, you know, in our community, and we appreciate you all giving students the opportunity to live productive lives and, you know, provide skills that they can use. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you so much for those comments. And as you heard earlier, with the consolidation into Dallas College, you know, now the front door of opportunity to everything we offer is at every location. So for every community, for every student, for every business and industry can tap in to that opportunity that we offer, but thank you for those comments.
Jan, I guess.
I just wanted to comment, I can feel your passion matches our passion.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a proud graduate of Mountain View College.
Good for you.
You did.
Good for y'all.
Well, thank you all so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for staying through the whole meeting. We will now move to Information Discussion Agenda Item D, Technology Update. The presenter is Dr. Brian Brown.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. It is my pleasure to provide an update on the Student 1-to-1 Computing Program scheduled to begin this fall. This is me's strategic plan, Priority Four, Goal One, Provide Anytime, Anywhere Access to Technology for 100% of students in Duncanville ISD. We've spent the last few weeks meeting with the Technology Advisory Committee, collecting feedback surveys from various stakeholder groups, and meeting with focus groups, including librarians, principals, teachers, and individuals from other 1-to-1 school districts. The Technology Advisory Committee is building a comprehensive plan for the rollout of devices to begin beginning in the fall. The plan includes working with the Department of Curriculum Instruction to develop professional development opportunities for our teachers and staff to build capacity for teaching and learning in a 1-to-1 environment. The committee is currently considering three options for device distribution as determined through the focus groups and surveys. All three options place iPads in pre-K 3 through first grade and Chromebooks in second through 12th grades. All three options are modeled after various school districts across Texas. Option A has pre-K through first grade leaving the devices at school, while second through 12th grades would take the devices home each evening. Option B expands the leave-at-school preference to include pre-K through 4th grades. And finally, Option C has all devices being taken home every day. If we settle on Option A or B, which is the leave, some of the devices stay at school all the time, we would have, there would be an additional consideration that would allow the leave-at-school devices to be taken home one or more nights a week. So no matter which option is ultimately selected, we have mobile hotspots available for families that need assistance with internet connectivity at home. And I want to thank you, Board of Trustees, for approving the purchase of those hotspots during the December board meeting, and thank you for supporting the ubiquitous computing program at Duncanville ISD. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, go ahead, Jack.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for your presentation. So are we at 1-to-1 currently?
No, ma'am, not at this moment, but in the fall, we will be, yes, ma'am.
In the, yes.
Yes, in the 22, 23 school year.
That's wonderful.
Wow. Any other comments? Thank you. Oh, yes, Carla.
So did you say that Option A and B, the Chromebooks would be taken home, have to be at least once a week?
It's not, they would have to be for the lower grades in Options A and B. The devices would stay at school, but they could if the campus chose to perhaps like have a homework night or night, you know, Tuesday night, they go home or something like that. And that would be a campus decision, and that was something the elementary and intermediary principals were interested in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move to the Information Discussion Agenda Item E, COVID-19 Update. The presenter is Dr. Karen Hologicah.
Good evening again, Madam President, Trustees, and Dr. Smith. In accordance with Strategic Goals 1 and 2 under Student Academic Success, I am pleased to share with you this evening an update on the impact of COVID-19 in Duncanville ISD and the actions we are continuing to take to ensure our students and staff remain safe and healthy. We will start by looking at our enrollment and attendance data. As Mr. Templeton shared earlier this evening, our enrollment has continued to remain above projection with over 11,000 students currently enrolled. And then, as Dr. Bigby shared, we've seen an attendance increase in February and March compared to our January numbers with an overall attendance nearing 89%. I know it's hard to believe, but we're already engaged in the enrollment process for next year. Our pre-K enrollment started on March 1st, so hopefully you've seen some of the signs around town as you've driven in the area. Our regular enrollment will start on April 1st, and we are working to really encourage that early enrollment, and we'll be offering several events to promote enrollment support for our families, including an Enrollment Help Center. Just as a reminder, our student COVID data is, of course, continually changing, so the numbers in your board book may not match the current data being presented this evening, but I am pleased to share that our student COVID cases have continued to decline, and we've seen fewer cases than we've seen since the onset of COVID. And currently, we are at zero cases, which we attribute much of this decline to, of course, the increase in our vaccinated students and staff. And with that in mind, on March 4th, we had another vaccine clinic and vaccinated another 34 students, staff, and community members. We will continue, of course, our efforts to mitigate the impact of COVID, and I will now turn it over to Ms. Kathleen Brown for our staff update.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees. I'm excited to report that we are almost at a month with zero positive COVID-19 cases in staff members. So we make it to the end of the week, we've made a month. Our staff has done an extraordinary job in continuing to implement COVID-19 protocols that we have in place in the district. We believe that these consistent practices have helped us to create a safer learning and working environment for students and staff alike. We definitely appreciate your support as we've weathered the COVID-19 storm together. Next slide. During the COVID-19 closure, I want to talk about some of the things that have happened since the closure and brought us to this point, to include staff shortages and the efforts that we've taken as a district. So during the COVID-19 closure, Duncanville ISD continued to pay all of our staff, even those that were not able to work from home due to their role. So when you think about roles that weren't able to work from a computer from home, our custodial staff, our transportation staff, all of those staff members, as a board, you decided that we would continue to pay them. This speaks to who we are as a district and the value we place on the people. The district has continued to support our staff this year by paying our employees for three bad weather days when the district was closed. This is the same stance that we took as a district on last year when we closed for over a week due to bad weather. I think we call it the snowmageddon. It's no surprise that, like districts across the nation, Duncanville ISD is also faced with staff shortages. These shortages span from our auxiliary departments to the classroom. We are appreciative and proud of the dedication of our staff members during these very uncertain times. Duncanville ISD has always been a leader in developing innovative ideas to meet the needs of our students despite the circumstances. So when times got tough, this year with staffing, several efforts were executed to make sure we were still able to equip, engage, and empower our students. Some of those current efforts include the $2,500 one-time payment for all full-time staff who were hired by September 1st of 2021. Although the one-time payment does not impact staff on an ongoing monthly basis, I want to put it in perspective for you. So if a custodial staff member received a 3% increase from the midpoint this year, that custodian would have yielded a total of $780 for the entire year. That would have been an increase of about $65 a month. So that $2,500 one-time payment, that's over three times that amount, and nearly a 10% increase for all of our custodians for income this year. The district also increased stipends and signing bonuses in hard-to-fill areas such as math, science, bilingual, CTE, and our EOC-tested areas as well as foreign language. In addition to that, we also increased our substitute pay. As the district struggled to fill classrooms with educators due to COVID-19 and the shortage of staff, additional substitutes were needed. We are aware that due to the proximity of our district with our neighbors, we share our substitute pool. Substitute pay was increased in an effort to attract additional subs to fill in the gap where, when teachers were out. Due to this effort, we currently have 158 active subs in the district. Even if every substitute in our pool was to sub every day, on most days, we know that there still would not be enough subs to fill the absences. So due to this need, teachers and instructional paraprofessionals have worked diligently to fill in the gap where no sub has been available, and the district has offered additional compensation for teachers who give up their conference period to cover another class. If an instructional paraprofessional fills in for a teacher for the day, they are also compensated at a rate that matches what a permanent sub would make in a day. And those permanent subs are those individuals that we hired a couple of years ago, right when the pandemic hit. So when we, when someone would get COVID, that was the person that would go in the room and serve as the teacher for the day. So they were boots on the ground. So unlike some of our neighboring districts who've had to close or cancel school on various days due to the shortage, Duncanville ISD has come together, like the family we are, to problem-solve and support one another, which ultimately supports our students. In order for students to learn, we must be able to get them to school. With this in mind, signing bonuses and matching payments in the amount of $1,500 were paid using SER funds for our bus drivers this year. So that's in addition to the one-time payment. Although we are still short in this area, this effort proved to be beneficial in helping us to retain our current drivers, it also helped us to recruit some additional drivers. We are aware that it takes everyone in our district to make things happen daily for students. In addition to our bus drivers, we have shortages in custodial, maintenance, food service, and in our warehouse. Many times, the focus is on what happens in the classroom because that is what we are here for, for our students. But we are very aware that none of those things can happen without our support staff. At times this year, we have been down 30-plus custodians. The impact that this has had on the upkeep of our facilities has been huge. Our staff members have put in the extra hours to ensure that essential cleaning takes place each day. It's definitely not always perfect because we have a lot of square footage to cover daily. So in an effort to support our custodial staff with cleaning, other employees were offered the opportunity to earn extra income in the evenings after they've completed their daily shifts. So we have many employees in the district who have a second job outside of Duncanville ISD. So to date, we've had 29 staff members who have taken advantage of that opportunity to join this effort to assist our evening custodial staff. Many districts around us have chosen to raise their pay for some of their auxiliary positions using SER funds. And so one thing we all know about SER funds is that they will run out, right? They're going to go away. And when they do, districts will not be able to continue to pay at those rates. In a recent meeting, we learned this increase has not solved their problems either. Like us, districts are still having a hard time finding what is most valuable. It's the people. In Duncanville, we want to invest in our people. So this leads me to the next steps that we plan to take this school year related to our staff. So like we did for our bus drivers and all of the planning that has happened this year related to SER funds, we plan to provide signing bonuses and matching stipends for the remainder of this school year for specific staff, to include some of our custodial staff, maintenance, food service, warehouse, and other transportation positions that are not drivers. This will be in the amount to match that $1,500 and will be paid over the next few months. Something that will be different about that is that instead of paying that amount in one lump sum, our employees will receive that lump sum, and then we soon forget that that happened. So our plan is to pay that, they'll see a fraction of this, these funds coming over their remaining checks. And this is in an effort to help our employees see and feel the impact, as we all have felt with the increase in gas prices. You go to the grocery store, your bill has doubled. And so that's in an effort too, so they can see it and feel it. The district also plans to incentivize perfect attendance for staff members by campus and our department. We've been tracking that throughout the year, and so we have many employees who have not missed any days this year, and so that's to be celebrated. We want to ensure that they are recognized and that they have a chance to receive something special if they are drawn, if they are selected, because it takes a lot of commitment to be here every single day, and we have staff members who are meeting that, meeting that charge. The district has also partnered with Task VHR Services for a staffing and compensation study. So although we know that pay is not the top reason why staff choose to leave our district, we know we have lots of work to do related to pay to be more competitive. We are excited about the results of these studies, and we are aware that we won't be able to do everything that is recommended, but it will assist in our planning and alignment with our strategic plan and our goal to be a top-paying district in our region. And last but not least, the district is very excited about the two opportunities you see on the screen. We have two job fairs coming up. Our auxiliary job fair will be held this week on Thursday over at the warehouse from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock PM. And then we have our teacher and instructional staff job fair that will take place on Saturday, April 9th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. So we are definitely looking for employees to join the greatest district on earth. And we know that Duncanville ISD is great because we have many employees who choose to stay right here in Duncanville ISD, and on a weekly basis, we have those who have left us, and they come right back, and they return. And we always say that on a weekly basis, they may leave, but they always come back. The information is being shared with you all as a reminder of the many efforts that you've made and that we've made as a district to continue to put the best interest of our students and our employees first. When it's the work we do as a district, we often can forget about the great things, right? So we were just in the moment, we're in the work. And so when you give so much, it can sometimes become what's expected, and we know that as well. So we want you to know that we recognize, we value your support, and the So we want you to know that we recognize, we value your support and the many efforts that have been made to demonstrate the appreciation for staff while continuing to be fiscally responsible, because we know that we have to do that as well. So I appreciate your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this
I don't think we have any. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Over the past few months, I've shared with you how we've provided instructional support to students, teachers, and leaders. Tonight, I am excited to share with you how we are supporting our families. Our family and community engagement team has hosted monthly parent university virtual sessions for our families. Next slide. And these sessions are hosted and led in English and in Spanish. So from July until February, we've had approximately 420 families log on, and then we've had an additional 220 families engage in the recordings. These topics have included anything from SEL strategies to use at home, focusing on literacy, what is it, early childhood, pre-K, K look like, and then working through MAPS. We talk about MAPS. We use a lot of acronyms in education, but it's important for our families to understand that. I can't speak, I could speak all night about the team that I work alongside. We know that it takes a village, and I'm truly blessed and honored to serve on a team that is all-in for our students. So I just wanted to share with you the monthly sessions that are being offered. We're happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
No, I think everybody's good. Thank you. We will now move to communications from citizens, and there are none. So seeing as there is no further business, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much. We have a comment from the board.
I'm so sorry, but as we were celebrating San Antonio, I didn't want to forget the other set of athletes that we have, our cheerleaders, want to appreciate them, our parents, our community, our staff. I saw many of our district leaders there. That's not part of their job, and so I just wanted to recognize all of you, the community, and the other athletes, the cheerleaders, for a job well done in San Antonio.